I really appreciate that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Kialan Begay Jr.
Chairman, good morning, Nana, RDC member, everyone on the line. Good morning, Kialan Begay Jr. I'm here to say that I'm here today to discuss this. I'm here today to discuss this. I'm here today to discuss this. Sorry. Um, we're now talking about the land with Mount Zini and many farms. I'm here today to discuss this. Chairman, so again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Begay. Sound like you just peeled off with your hot rod there.
Somebody pulled off the side of me.
Honorable Freeland.
Good morning, Chairman. That was a good one, brother. Good morning, colleagues, not I, Resource Development Committee members. I'm Shane Mark Freeland. She had a lot of those things he took from his son, Kialan. He says, I don't send you Canada, she said, I don't turn up at eight. Good morning from Eastern Agency, Crown Point. I represent each chapters out here, Crown Point, though, not just keys, though, see I, although the senti, White Rock, Lake Valley, Herfino, and Naiyese. Uh, good morning to one and all, and look forward to our conversation this morning, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart.
Oh, good morning, Chairman. I was just, I was a vice chair. I don't understand. So I know it's for you, though, staff. It's just how he should say, though, in the quarter, and then he got it. He's one of the ones that today, though, you're an honest person, she has a Wilson Cister Jr. And she had to tell us all that, and I said, I don't want to charge you, it's a little bit. I'll cheat once, I don't need you to. I report to my agency, to represent the Resource Development Committee of 24th Navajo Nation Council. What's so neat, and she's a good question, if she's cheating, that's a double between the channel. I don't, uh, so now, thank you for this morning, so. Now, so it's in the game, so I can't have any time. I'm going to show you, I think.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart, Honorable Daniels. Yeah, you have recognized in she almost something, you know, is it coaching, but she's changing. So now, but that's a trade okay, I need that shit now, I don't know what I did, and then she knows. Target chapters, when I should, I should get, so I can send one. Then I'm sorry, I'm for fooling, burning, I don't know, come still. Okay, I don't want to talk, quit asking us, I give. I think, no, not a staff, Mr. Tahi.
Good morning, Chairmembers of RDC, those online. My name is Rodney Tahie. I'm the Legislative Advisor for Resource and Development Committee. I'm Kialan and I sent you, Kenya, and I'm Reggie from Steenby, Arizona. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that you do for us. Although, Ms. Chi.
Hello, good morning, everyone. She Karen Chi, yeah. I don't know anything, touch it, me, you see, don't. My disguise is my sister's team. How about that's a change, to reach a destination. I am the legislative reporter for RDC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chi, for helping us. Uh, Ms. Con will be with us today, but we do appreciate the work that she does for us all the time. Let me go back to Honorable Herman Daniels.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I can, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, resources and development committee members. I don't know, because I apologize, we're getting on late. I was in a meeting with, um, Shantel, Shantel School. I'm a guy that doesn't see her. I could only go down. Look for the day, the mission, I could, I don't could have seen it, so I could have, Herman Daniels, Junior. I don't know, and she's like, eh, but I mean. I don't tell it to you, that's it. That's good, that's the name. Who here clean me, don't know, not my guy, the name, I didn't see. I would try, I could, I did, deep in the, can't hit him, he told me. I don't know, I could, but I'm not sure, I'm gonna go down. Not before I, or if it's true. That's true, I don't know, I can't even ask this. Well, I can't, it's a, it's a check, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. We do have Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So, press star six.
Good morning, yet eh, Ben, it's not, uh, this is, um, Honorable, um, Otto So, uh, she's not, uh, so. I did it, uh, yet eh, Ben. Uh, she not quite, no, it's all here, clean me, and she. Don't know, it's a good, but I'm a bad, she's cheating. But I didn't, that's it, she. Oh, it's enough, Jen, either, she never had, I didn't know, so. So, ton of mistakes, the day, eh, but they should have, so I didn't, and she. Oh, it, I, yeah. I'll be home, Washington, the idea, but I can understand, when they're hot, then they. I don't need you to, that's it, yet eh, Ben, it's not, uh, Resources and Development Committee. Thank you. You are meet.
Thank you, Honorable So. We do have from Speaker's Office, Mr. Donovan Hanley.
Yet eh, Ben, Chair and Committee Members. Uh, my name is Donovan. Uh, I work with Speaker's Office, uh, Kian, he's not, oh, it's all here, it's any, but she's seen, I seen this too, though, touching edge, another. Thank you.
Thank you. Davis Philford, are you on the call? Then, Ms. Clashon, from Office of President, Vice President.
Morning, yet eh, Ben, Honorable Resources, Resource and Development Committee. Uh, Terry Clashing, you know, she has a lot of cheese, and she don't know, it's just a touchy, but she's cheating, so. What do you, that's a change, I don't want you to excuse me, addition, Ella. I am here from the Office of the President and Vice President. I am an executive staff assistant. I will be filling in for Davis Philford for the rest of the week. And I look forward to today's discussion. Thank you.
Okay, she love, yeah, Ms. Clashon, from NTU A. Mr. Rex Coontz.
Uh, good morning, uh, Honorable, um, RDC. We appreciate the, the invite here, and, uh, this is Rex Coontz, Deputy General Manager with NTU A. And we do have an item that we need to, uh, present, and we, uh, appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Daniel Stevens.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, I'm Dan Stevens with NTU A, uh, Construction Engineering Supervisor for Water and Wastewater. I thank you for the opportunity to share today.
Thank you, Mr. David Schultz.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Nez. Uh, Dave Schultz, the Principal Engineer for the Headquarters Water and Wastewater Engineering Division, and I'll be supporting Daniel Stevens in his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taff Black Horse.
Good morning, Chair, Taff Black Horse, and good morning to you, sir, and the Vice Chair, and the rest of the RDC members, and delegates, and members. I just want to say and introduce myself, Taff Black Horse was right away manager, under the Office of, uh, Rex Coontz, Deputy Director, Manager, General Manager, I'm sorry. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Black Horse. Regina Martinez.
Good morning, Honorable Delegate, um, Delegate. Um, my name is Regina Martinez. I work under the Deputy General Manager's Office with NTU A. Thank you.
Judy Chaves.
Yeah, Dave, good morning, Chair and Resources and Development Committee. My name is Judy Chavez. I don't like initially, it's a kind of a she's cheating, Kialan, that's a change, that's another. I'm the Administrative Coordinator for the Office of the Deputy General Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else on the call that wishes to introduce themselves?
Good morning, Honorable Nez. This is Rainey Nelson, the Associate Deputy GM, there with NTU A.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good, I. Uh, this is Martin Ashley. With, um, under government liaison with NTU A, under the General Manager's Office. Yeah, yeah, that's what the net, that's cheating, it's cheating, it's cheating, it's cheating, it's cheating, it's another. I guess, and I, he seems, I don't know, they feature.
Go ahead.
Yeah, eh, Ben, um, good morning, RDC members. This is Vera Shirley from NTU A, the Right Away Agent for Water and Wastewater. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, eh, this is Willie Tracy, Junior, Capture Manager for Navajo. My interest is your feral horse, uh, reporting topic. Yeah, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Next.
Uh, good morning, this is Landre Piggy, with Navajo Utility Authority's Administrative Coordinator, Deputy General Manager, Manager's Office.
Good morning, and thank you.
There's a lot of into it.
Then, I could see now, Joe, I don't know, I could, I think, I don't know, none of all it. Number three, reviewing and proving the agenda. Mr. Tahi, could you read the agenda for us?
Chairmembers of RDC have proposed agenda, reads as follows. Resource and Development Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council, regular meeting, Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, 10 a.m. Presiding Honorable Ricky Nez, Chairperson, Honorable Thomas Walker Jr., Vice Chairperson. Location via telecommunication, one, call the meeting to order, roll call, invocation announcements. Two, recognizing guests and visiting official. Three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Four, reviewing and improving the journal, June 15th, 2022, regular meeting. Five, receiving report. A, update report by Navajo Tribal Utility Authority on the Tubus City Clergy Valley Wastewater Treatment Facility Project presenter. Daniel Stevens. B, update report by the Division Natural Resources and Department of Agriculture on the feral horses and how the Navajo Nations handling them during the drought situation. Presenters, Dr. Rudy Shabala, Division Director, Leo Wassman, Manager, Department of Agriculture. Six, old business, none, seven, new business. A, approving an in-person Resource and Development Committee regular meeting at Church Rock Chapter in Church Rock, New Mexico, for Wednesday, July 13th, 2022, at 10 a.m. B, approving an in-person leadership meeting with the Department of Fish and Wildlife to discuss the continued viability of the Wolf Springs Ranch and its operation for, for Monday, July 25th, and Tuesday, July, July 26th, 2022, at 9 a.m. Near Walsensburg, Colorado. C, approving an in-person leadership meeting with Navajo Nation Water Rights Commission to discuss fiscal year 2023 for August 7th through the 9th, 2022, at 9 a.m. At the Tomaha Resort in Santa Ana, New Mexico. Eight, closing meeting announcements, and a German. Chairmembers of RDC, that is the proposed agenda, run to the record. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Tahi. Honorable Members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second. Chairman, motion. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, motion, second by Honorable Stewart. Yeah. And I could, I've hit off, not, I. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments, questions, or additions, amendments to the agenda?
Chairman.
Yes.
The Chair, we would need to amend the agenda and remove the journals for approval, as it's not been approved internally for distribution to RDC for final approval. Back to you, Chairman.
Chairman, I'll make that motion for you.
Okay, Amendment One, and, uh, motion by Honorable Freeland to remove. Number four, journals from June 16th, second by Honorable Kialan Begay Jr. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions? But then, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? Chairman, I vote green. Thank you. Honorable Kialan Begay Jr., how do you vote? Honorable Begay votes green. Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland.
I vote green, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green, Chairman.
Thank you, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries, will remove the journals off the agenda, since it has been approved yet, so. Back to the main motion, any comments or questions? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Well, green, Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Uh, Chairman Kial was green, thank you.
Thank you, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries, we do have an approved agenda before us, and, uh, we're down to number five on the agenda. Receiving reports, she might hold, she's doing, and, uh, I'm not sure if you want to do new business first, or go ahead with the reports. If so, you could make a motion to suspend the floor rules, if you want.
Chairman, I'll do that.
If not, um, Honorable Stewart. Honorable Freeland, okay. Honorable Freeland moves to suspend the floor rules, to go to new business or approvals. There, second.
Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Any comments or questions on the motion to spend the floor rules and go to new business first? None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Uh, Chairman Kial was green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniel.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Love a green Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green Chairman.
Thank, thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries, we will go to new business, and, uh, first on the agenda. Will be a providing, approving an in-person Resource and Development Committee regular meeting at Church Rock Chapter in Church Rock, New Mexico, for Wednesday, July 13th, at 10 a.m. Let's have a motion and a second. Motion.
Motion.
Honorable Stewart, second.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, thank you. Any comments or questions? The date is already there. None. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Uh, Chairman Kial was great, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Love a green Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green Chairman.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries, we'll have that made in for July 13th at Church Rock Chapter, 10 a.m. Thank you. Next, B, approving an in-person leadership meeting with the Department of Fish and Wildlife to discuss the continued viability of the Wolf Springs Ranch and its operations for Monday, July 25th, and Tuesday, 26th, at 9 a.m. Near Walsensburg, Colorado. Let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I'll motion.
Daniel.
I'll second.
Thank you, Daniel.
Honorable Freeland, motion, second by Honorable Daniels. Any comments or questions?
Chairman, Freeland.
Chairman.
Yes, Honorable Freeland.
Chairman, um, when we have this leadership meeting, I, I think it's going to be real important that we have Dr. Shabala there. Um, maybe even the Chief of Staff. And, you know, I, I think they need to understand the viability of why we're going to go there, or the reason why we're going there. Um, the legislation that Honorable Smith, um, um, dropped, that we voted on as a council, was vetoed by the President. So what's the plan to keep this ranch going? I guess, how are they going to build operational money into the budget? I, I think we need to hear that. We need to hear, what is it, what is the long-term plan to keep the, to keep operations going? Um, I think that's something we need, we need to hear from Dr. Shabala. And maybe even the Chief of Staff, I don't know, from somebody from OPVP. But, um, they need, we need to figure this out. Since that legislation was vetoed by President Nez, thank you, Chairman.
Um, Honorable Freeland, with your motion, and Honorable Daniel, second to this, um, approval for the meeting at Wolf Springs Ranch. You could say with your motion, Honorable Freeland, that we would like to have Dr. Shabala to be the Executive Director of Division of Natural Resources, to be present at this meeting, as well as Division of Economic Development, Mr. JT Willie, to be there. And also include the also the President and Vice President, Mr. Honorable Freeland.
Uh, Chairman, I'd like to make that motion then. And any supporting staff, any supporting staff that you need to bring as well, because we, we need to figure out a long-term economic plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Honorable Daniels, do you concur?
Mr. Chair, yes.
Okay, Mr. Tahi, if you would send an invitation to Dr. Shabala, Mr. JT Willie, and the also the President, Vice President, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President as well, Mr. Tahi.
Chairman, I, I will do that, but, but I just want to make a point also. In addition to the, to the dates, we would have to look at another date, because Budget Finance approved Legislation 102. And July 25th through the 29th is when we have oversight hearing on budgets for our divisions that RDC oversees. So we would need to select a different date, when I, and I will work with Fish and Wildlife on coordinating the, the date for this. It will have to be in early August, Chairman and RDC members.
Okay, Mr. Tahi, so can we just approve it as is, and then we'll have an amendment to the memo request?
The Chairmembers of RDC, yes, we can do that.
Okay. It may be best to do that, so certainly appreciate your recommendations, Mr. Tahi. Okay, uh, corner, so, uh, and, uh, any other comments or questions?
Chairman Kialan.
Honorable Begay, go ahead.
Uh, Chairman, could the staff also combine, um, forward to the committee, and those are invited to get the original legislation that, uh, authorized the purchase of the property? And since then, what the program has been doing as far as the operation, the operation cost. Uh, the, the program.
Honorable Begay, you broke up. Could you, uh, repeat?
Uh, Chairman, can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I apologize, I'm driving home, but, um, I shouldn't say that, um, but anyway, uh, Chairman, uh, could, uh, leave, uh, property, now, I was, I had, da. Yeah, I mean, I'm not so, but not, I was, I don't have, so. But I was, I, uh, that legislation should provide information, the plan. I is up in yet, I don't, I is up in now, after he came, I'm not, I give you, he's a big, I'm a heart, or, hey. I don't have, I don't wish to, every year, I'm not, so, so, so. I don't, which is over, uh, oversight program, I give. I like, and that's, and it's, I don't have, and that's, uh. Eh, the key, not so, so, I give, uh, I would say by, within two weeks. A, the key now, so, 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 uh, I would say by within two weeks. Uh, a stock in my second, he took with all nil. A baby, not just yet, he's yeah, she don't need other than he could go eat it all, he put on. He hasn't seen it, he did all beso, so maybe, uh, an official, uh, statement directly from the, uh, Controller. Of authorizing how much money was utilized and how much money has been utilized in operating that particular land, he hasn't seen it, he. I don't, but the logic, the fund management plan and also the plan of operation, that she the program that there's in, he like it up, and I'm not sure that he like. He been the house, I don't hit, I, I thought, I said, I, I'm the whole cheese. So I think it do, it do.
Involvement from them, but as time went on and it's kind of got a little less where we had, we had no shows and weren't able to get on agenda sometimes. And then outreach from NTUA from 2018 to 2020 for all stakeholders, the farm boards, the chapters, the grazing committees and the local health officials, health organizations. We've done quite a bit of work to involve them. And these slides just kind of demonstrate that efforts going back to 2018. And so where we now stand is we feel that we no longer have a way forward in obtaining the chapter resolution. And so we don't want to allow the thing to sit still, so we're going to submit the EAA packet without the supporting resolution. And so why we wanted to bring it to the attention of the RDC is we feel that it may be delayed because it's missing that and in which case we would be coming to the RDC to seek support. And so that's kind of basically an update of where things are at right now. I don't know if there's any questions that anybody had on that, if there's any part of it that you'd like further explain?
Thank you, Mr. Stevens for the presentation. Does any of the NTUA representatives want to add to the presentation? Captain Combs?
Thank you, Chairman Nas. I will state that, you know, the Tubus City community has just outgrown the existing lagoon system. The lagoon system is a series of large cells and it allows natural biological processes to occur and the large cells are due to dependency on evaporation is one of the ways of disposing of the water. So the land base is kind of restricted. It's down in the valley and then Moan Kopi Wash is on one side and that causes a threat as well. That wash is about 20 feet deep. And we do, we have seen that wash full during the spring runoff and during the monsoon season. So it poses a threat to the lagoon that potentially could cause the lagoon to wash out. So that's one issue, another reason to replace it. The mechanical plant that Daniel referred to mechanically separates the wastewater and the liquid and then it uses a mechanical process to digest the solids and to clarify the water. So there's a lot more human input on treating the wastewater properly. It's a much smaller footprint. We're asking for eight acres of land. And it's also designed in what is called treatment trains. You have two trains that you can run this process through and you can alternate the trains for maintenance and repair. But if you ever have to upsize in the future, you can add additional trains. So it is scalable and it should allow the community to grow for the next 50, 60 to 70 years with, without any additional land or requirement. With the pending water rights settlement that's predicted to bring 60,000 to 100,000 additional acre feet of water to this region, it's very important to have this plant in place when that water arrives so that they can use the water. For, you know, for every drop of water we're bringing, there's got to be a wastewater treatment solution. Tubus City has really grown and developed. They have a lot of a lot of businesses there, conveniences. It is, you know, one of the examples of how we'd like our growth centers to grow in the future. They're growing an economy. Their chapter has a lot of future plans. They do have a layout that they've showed us, the projects they want to build. And it's really imperative that we get this plant done in order for them to continue their process of growth. Because otherwise it'll be completely stifled and we may have to put a mandate on additional connections. So right now we're trying to process the TAA. As Mr. Stevens noted, we have the consents. We just were unable to get supporting resolutions from the chapter or from the farm board. And we've had multiple engagements. They're just for some reason reluctant to provide support. The TAA technically, from our understanding, can still progress forward. That's what we're intending to do. But if it gets stuck in the process, then we may come back to this committee for support and help to get that through the process. It is an important project. Again, Tubus City and the region there does need this project and it's very important for their growth in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, thank you. Second?
Freeland?
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Go ahead, man. I chair you, huh? Honorable Begay, are you back on the call? Then, honorable members of RDC, any comments or questions?
Chairman, Thomas Walker.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman and committee members, although our staff and everyone that's on our meeting call here this morning. Although the presenters, NTUA, Mr. Coats and your staff there, thank you for coming to RDC with the report. A few weeks ago, last month, I had made this request to RDC and our staff to get reports from NTUA on projects, especially those that are for these primary growth areas and then the secondary growth areas. A very large communities, then second large communities, then we have smaller communities, of course. So I felt that the need for RDC to receive information on projects in that way. Because some of the projects are not, you know, going in a timely fashion or as smooth. Progress isn't as planned and there are places where some resolution or some effort is made to get communities and then our land users, which are grazing permit holders, the farmers, the farm permit holders to get their endorsements or their consents. In working with people, you know, the best, the best way to do this is to get everyone in consensus. So as you know, the area that we're looking at this morning on the aerial map is Coal Mine Canyon Chapter out in Western Agency. Although mentioned this Tubus City Chapter, which is just right, right there. This project is, is sitting right in the valley. The valley is mainly Coal Mine Chapter, Coal Mine Community. Coal Mine Residence is When one community is growing rapidly, their growth and development is ongoing every day. Then nearby community is somehow involved in infrastructure and support or they're part of the same infrastructure that needs development or needs to be improved. Although I know that this morning we have a sort of a time, we have a time issue because we have to get to another meeting right after the RDC meeting today. So I believe we still have some more items or another item to get to right after this one. For now, the information that's provided, that's information and that's something for the record. The next step, when that's determined, then I'm sure RDC will be being formed again. Though RDC may, may take up another meeting, another opportunity to discuss this maybe more in depth. One of the largest Navajo hospitals there and they're, they have plans to expand their facilities also, which includes an elderly group home or a nursing home. As a committee member and then as a delegate from that area who oversees these chapters that we're focused in on today. I appreciate the report in NTUA and I appreciate the leadership's attention in this area. Thank you. Back to you, Chairman.
Honorable Begay? Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay. At each of the community. If we know there's one situation in the community, obviously there's also similar situation in another community. NTUA, could they provide the committee? I mean, to other areas of the communities that are in the growth section of the communities. How much funding are we looking at? The partnership. Just Saturday, I know NHA, I won't be there for sure. I have been asking in, in, in NHA, how much are they participating or contributing in funding allocation with these type of projects? Do they connect to these systems? And then the businesses, economic development. It's always that we want growth in economic development. A lot of time we neglect to mention these infrastructures. From a home, from a business, from even schools. Are there the system that they utilize? That their school system, the BIA, even the puppet school. And then some of the community school. Of course, the resources, including the funding. And this goes to the question, Chairman. Every time that we approve community land use plan. So these are the areas I believe that this vision of community development needs to take part in addressing a lot of these issues before we approve them. When they need it, store, they need it, deep out growth, they need it. I believe that the one thing that we start, need to start looking at is how they're proposing the infrastructure. The pre machine, for my region. For example, mini farms. I mean, you've got three school system there. You've got the BIA, you've got the community school and then you've got a puppet school. But yet know what you go, mini farm high school. You have three sections for wastewater treatment, but only one is being utilized. But at the same time, residential, you've heard about me talking about these phalsetic system. The layers of layers of situation that we're beginning to see about the infrastructure. Now going back. I'm not sure if land department and those programs are listening in to provide their input and recommendation to the TAA. So that tells me if, 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 if a company, I mean, yeah, if an entity resorts to RDC for progress, you pose a question to say that why isn't being done at the administration level? So I would like to hear from them. Why isn't that, why, what is the situation? What is the problem? How can we resolve it rather than just saying, yeah, okay, just do it? I'm sure they have a reason and we'd like to hear the reason directly from them. Not just only in Tubus City, but these bigger growth area of the Navajo Nation. And then again, going to the chapter level, resolution. But it's always that we, they don't want to withdraw land for a certain purpose and we know that. One prime example is community cemetery. We have a hard time of our Navajo people trying to bury their loved one, but it's just a matter that they resort to certain locations and then on top of that, they have to pay for it. The overall objective, I'd like to hear that as well if that's possible. I know it's only reported in Tubus City. But again, why only one location though? I mean, I know that in the Chinny and the mini farms and Penyon and these growth area are also in dire need of improvement. But again, I mean, whatever situation that we're in, it's always that there's always an obstacle while we try to Chairman, so again, somehow, yes, the chapter needs to be involved, the local grazing official needs to be involved, local community land use plan members needs to be involved and so on. It doesn't make sense to me that this decision has to just go back to the resource, the oversight committee for approval. Although these layers of programs. The dire need of it across the board. We might as well just go ahead and help them with this obstacle and let them get to work. Maybe there's a solution. Why only one location? Why just do it across the Navajo Nation? That could provide us the plan of how we need to resolve a lot of these situations, the issues that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Honorable Begay. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Chairman?
Honorable Otto So?
I wish that NTUA could provide a, a really good presentation on this. There's three proposals for this site. This fund was paid, is from 19 million dollars allocated by the Navajo Nation Council. This project's been idle. NTUA just held this and it's been idling. Started to speak about recouping the money. And there's three locations to this site here. When this project was funded, it was intended to be built on the current site that they have land control. Site B, site A, B, C. Site T is a new site next, next to the existing lagoons. There's three proposals for this location and at the end they went after another site across the Moan Kopi Wash. According to chapter resolution. And that's the chapter resolution from Coal Mine Chapter. Tubus Chapter A did a supporting resolution for the project. There's three sites that NTUA has on their radar. And the main intent was to build the site either on, next to the facility, current facility of the lagoon. But they don't want to. The other is to build on the current site, which they have land control. They don't need to go out and look for land consent and so forth. But they, they choose to go across the street or go across the wash and build there. They do have consent from the landowners and so forth. But the chapter resolution. Coal Mine Chapters, yes, whatever's going on, going on between NTUA and Coal Mine. And that's their internal portion and that's the administration portion of it. In the name of the public health, what do you do? Wherever NTUA chooses to build, whether it's on site A, B or C. For the purpose of public health and there's other options that, that could be vested in. Tubus City became what it is because of the benefit. Either, uh, Tubus City became what it is because of the benefit. They couldn't build homes or improve their homes, but they have out there because of the benefit. With the administrative orders put in place with Navajo Administrative Area and Hopi Administrative Area, which allowed economic development and, um, um, uh, on, and community development on both Navajo and Hopi side. Uh, it comes back to RDC and, 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 and I do really, um, uh, I, I thought about this and, um, I didn't want to step into it because it's a matter of the administration and the right of way process and the, um, uh, funding, the, the agency that we funded to, 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 to fund this, um, sewer treatment plant. It's not, uh, and, and, and that public education, uh, not just, I really haven't seen any public education in, in the broad scale to the community public yet. Option B does not fly. Any other choice like such as inman domain and so forth. That's why, I think RDC has the, um, has authority over that. Yeah, um, yeah, uh, that could be, that could be exercise. The other is that Intiway go back to site A or site C. Are planning around it because Intiway, you know, we gave you money. At what point are you going to infuse some dollars in this? You see his dollars that we have infused for this very project. We know it's a loan. And, uh, and, and, and this, uh, project's been idling since two thousand seventeen. But we have to find a solution to, to this process, this place. And as I alluded to, option A, you don't need any other right of way approval. You're within your current land withdrawal, which you can facilitate that, that facility. But now you choose not to and, and this, and, 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 and yes, uh, the flood issue comes up, but I think you have revenues that you could fund. And the council has given you, um, the, raise the debt ceiling. Seek out another loan to raise the, uh, to, 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 to have a, um, 'cause, uh, if, if you're running into problems where you can't get site B, uh, moving, you have to look on, uh, look at the other two options. 'Cause if option B doesn't fly and this is the current process that they are proposing, that's been, uh, um, proposed to you in this, um, report here, if it don't move forth, um, you're going to have to elude to option A or B. And I believe that, that, that's what, uh, option A would be a lot easier because you don't have to get additional grazing consent nor chapter, um, resolution because that's a, and a land withdrawal that has been already approved many, many years ago for that purpose. And, um, uh, I, I appreciate this discussion, uh, for this, uh, purpose because it is needed because of the growth of Tubus City. Uh, the, um, um, if Tom O'Halloran moves forth with the, uh, new facility for Tubus City, we're going to have an issue. We're going to have an issue and that new facility for the healthcare facility will be, uh, at risk. 'Cause the issue is that can the current lagoon meet the demand of the, um, sewer treatment? And if it can't, that new facility will not, or may not be looked at by, by Congress. And that's what we're looking at. Also with the oncology center in Tubus City. Tubus City has the mini, uh, oncology center. It's the, it's, it's, it's the facility that's needed, but, uh, we need these approvals, which is required by law. But again, you know, uh, council can waive these provisions. And, uh, moving, moving forth, um, I think really had to move this forward due to the issue of public health and education. Whether they live in Cameron or they live in Coal Mine, they live as far as, um, Cedar Ridge and Tonalea, Cow Spring, um, top of the world towards, up towards Tonahedlin. Utilizing the Unified School District, the Tubus City Boarding School and the health facility that's there in Tubus City. Uh, this is a very important project.
All right, Chair, Honorable Otto Soh. Let me go back to Intiway. Stevens, Mr. Coontz?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, let me, let me call up the, uh, the, uh, presentation with, with the map on there that shows the project and I can explain, I think I can answer all of Delegate So's, uh, comments. So, right here, you see the, the red area that's encircled is the eight acres. And you can see the old lagoon, which is a huge series of, um, cells. And then in between those two, you see Mon Copi Wash. And you can see how the, the wash is migrating, uh, during the high flow at times. And that's where this oldest, this old site is, is, uh, is threatened. So, yes, we have land base there, but it's not a good idea to put it in there because of that pros- that problem of an engineering standpoint. It's, it's still threatened by, um, uh, possible washout. The second thing is the shaded area kind of in the light pale green is a flood zone. Army Corps of Engineers has, uh, uh, looked at that and, and studied and created this flood zone. So, in our initial pursuit of rights aways and these options that Delegate So is relating, we run into those issues. EPA does not want us to build on that site because of the wash threat. Uh, Land Department has said we, we, they discourage us building there again because of the, uh, the flood zone. So, the site is up in the higher region. It's out of the flood zone. This is, this is the option that everybody will support from engineering and regulatory standpoint. And because it's a mechanical plant, it takes a lot smaller land base. So, what we have to do from EPA standard is once the old lagoon is out of service, you, you have to let it dry out and make some attempts to remediate that, that property. And there's no way to do that with active wastewater flowing into it. That's why we have to run the wastewater through an alternate site. So that's kind of where we're, where we're, um, where we're at with this. We're really down to that one option, uh, that, that will meet everybody's requirement, um, regulatory and land base and environmental. And so the, the old lagoon site is, is, uh, not really an optimal site and would still be threatened. So that's why, that's why we're not going there. The, um, the funding, um, is primarily secured uh, because we've had all these struggles with getting rights away and it's taken a long time. As you all know, inflation happens and the project cost keeps increasing. And with regard to Honorable, um, Kialan McGay's comment about some global planning and, and, uh, future outlook for the other communities and growth centers. Uh, in, in, in the current ARPA legislation zero zero eight six, you'll see several of these plants in there. And if you look at the dollar amount, the dollar amounts are, are a small portion compared to the, the cost of the total plant. Shiprock, for example, we need about three million to bridge the cost increase. Uh, but it's about a thirty million dollar plant. So we have the other, the other funding in place. And we're only asking for the additional to, uh, finish it off. Um, Tubus City is in there, again, about eighty, ninety percent of it we have in hand. Cayenta is the same way. We, we have that. The only large one you'll see is Chinley. Uh, but we can go through the same process of soliciting dollars. We, we go through USDA for grants and loans. We go through CDBG, we go through EPA, multiple sources there, IHS. Most of these projects have multiple sources of dollars because they're, they're very large costs. And so in those proposals, we're only asking for the additional amount, uh, to, to be able to get into the construction. Uh, so that kind of helps you understand those areas and, and in there, you know, we do have water rights and transmission coming, uh, through these big projects. There are some areas where we need supplemental water. You'll see in our proposal, there's five wells, uh, that are needed in areas that, uh, will need supplemental groundwater. Uh, so that, that's, that's the reason it is, it is, um, capacity, uh, projects, but it's exactly what, uh, Honorable Kialan McGay's talking about. Is trying to with some foresight of preparing for the future so that our, our growth centers can, can continue to grow and plan and move ahead. So that's what we're attempting to do, um, with your support. Um, we, we, we have illustrated the multiple contacts we had with the Coal Mine Chapter. Um, it's a little complex here because this land base here is under Coal Mine Chapter. The community that's serving is Tubus City. We've had engagement with Tubus City as well. They support the project, you know, they have, we have their support. So there has been community engagement. Um, and we tried to illustrate that with the listing of contacts. So I think both community, both chapters are aware of what we're attempting to do. Uh, but we're trying to move it forward and, and submit it. Uh, we think we have a TA package that we can submit now. And, uh, this was a heads up to help you understand our concerns. Um, as you know, this issue with trying to clear property to do growth and development. Uh, you, you heard us bring another project to the Delcon Services, to the Delcon Hospital. It's always, it's also a land issue. We have a planned project, uh, for Ganado. We're upsizing the wastewater plant there. During the CARES Act, a well was drilled in that community. Uh, you'll see a small portion of money to build the pump house and connect it to the system because of the timeframe with CARES, we weren't able to get that project done. So we've got to tie it in. That brings water to the region. The plant will help Ganado community grow. However, um, the.
Mr. Coontz, we're, we're discussing, uh, the Tubus City area, sir?
Yes, I just want to relate to the, the, uh, Kialan was talking about the issue with, uh, clearances. So there is, there's a number of them. But with Tubus City, um, it, the, the plant's there for that reason and that re- that red zone. Uh, the flood zone keeps, uh, us from using the old site. And the, the wash is a threat to the old site. So we don't want it, we don't want to build there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coontz. Honorable members, I've already seen. Any other comments or questions?
Uh, Chairman. Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Uh, Chairman, all committee members, all colleagues that are on the call here, all the presenters, all Intiway, again, thank you for the report. Um, appreciate the, uh, discussion this morning here with, uh, leadership. Uh, um, so a number of, uh, factors are, are involved. Transitions from, you know, local leadership, grazing official, oh, farm board, that, hey, their elected chapter officials, oh. So every four years, you know, they sometimes experience turnovers. Sometimes complete turnovers. Things that are, uh, in motion or in progress, plans like this, then, then their, a local leadership transition takes place. But the new incoming, they, they take, take, take time or take their time or it takes time for them to pick up the issue and, uh, you know, provide the necessary guidance, direction, um, to, to their constituents. Sometimes that, that, uh, takes time. Sometimes it doesn't happen. That, that's a factor. I think we all, all recognize that, uh, those transitions and sometimes it interrupts, um, plans and progress. It's the feasibility of the, um, plan and proposal that's presented today. If it was feasible to consider the other options. That's what, um, that's what would be the focus. Other plan, A, B, and C and D. D, that's an unknown. I consider another plan alternative is to go look to Tubus City community itself. So it's not going to stop growing. We know that. We all know that. We all recognize that. I, I don't know, maybe the, one day the boundaries would need to be moved, moved outward. Maybe has some boundaries, administrative areas. Uh, not, not anytime soon, but in the future. Uh, I would encourage the, uh, community, the chapter of Tubus City to look, you know, at their, uh, infrastructure development plans, especially in this area, wastewater. They, uh, downstream, either, uh, that Mon Copi Wash leads into Cameron. The support that's needed is, is a local, local support by, at local, uh, leadership. Local chapter, local residents, land users. Oh, I know the NTUA, that's the um, their, their protocol uh, is to work with local communities. The most um, you know, uh, using local protocols and protocols from our culture. That inform consent, buyer consent. Allow them to give full consent. That's sort of like our, our uh, our protocols that are in place. It's not written anywhere really, but that's the practice. That's, that's how the uh, consent, um, land user consent is established. Call it all. And also, I would also look to land administration, other Department of Agriculture, Division of Natural Resources, EPA to also step in to provide their administrative support. Other the other uh, factors, the pandemic. I do recollect um, NTUA coming to Coal Mine Chapter back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Right up to the, right up to when the pandemic started. Uh, January or February of uh, twenty twenty. In T U H, it best of be. Projects. I feel like that, that's um, that's the uh, nation making that decision. Resource of, I mean, I look to your leadership, your guidance and direction always in, in situations where uh, the oversight has a role to play. A role to fulfill a duty. Duty is, is calling. Normally, you know, oversight, we uh, will, will pay attention to developments, developments and we support. Normally don't get, get uh, closely involved unless you're a delegate from that area. Chairman, all committee members, appreciate the time. So uh, back to you. I know we have other items too this morning, uh, before we get to the NABE committee meeting. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Members.
Can I, I speak? This is Rena Dotson.
We have a NABE committee meeting at one o'clock, Shenanah. RDC, do you have any other comments or questions? If not, Shenanah. But all this report from NTUA by Mr. Stevens and Mr. Mr. Coontz on the Tubus City Coal Mine Wastewater Treatment Facility project. On the presentation, Shenanah. It talks about the current plant unable to meet discharge permit requirements. You go down to the third bullet point, it says that the plant is under compliance order from Navajo EPA back in twenty fourteen. In twenty sixteen, two years later, the plant is still under compliance order, but under the US EPA. NTUA was fined twice by Navajo EPA. And this case here has escalated to US DOJ because um, just looking at all this, Shenanah. My recommendation would be to have an in-person meeting, a discussion, a leadership meeting with NTUA, with Coal Mine Chapter, Tubus City Chapter, Division of Natural Resources, Navajo EPA, Navajo Land Department, General Land Development Department, the grazing officials that represent the two chapters. And perhaps IHS needs to be at the table. And our two colleagues, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, who represents Coal Mine, Honorable Otto So, representing Tubus City. We can look at this. You learn to sit and reason together. So I look at the challenges that are expressed by NTUA next steps because there's an issue with the chapter resolution. They haven't obtained that. And also it says, should the TAA be delayed by GLAD and Navajo Land Department? NTU would be compelled to take next step to seek support from the RDC. And I believe that's what Mr. Coontz is talking about here, is reaching out for support. But Shenanah. Let me just say this. If you have had a history of compliance issues, not being in compliance, and you're made to pay some fines, you're demonstrating that you do not want to comply with Navajo Nation laws. You need to get in compliance, NTUA. As oversight, we do have support over our enterprises. You have to do your part as well. And this current lagoon serve the communities, that's an issue. And a question that needs solution. All of us, not just one. We have to come together, Shenanah. Set up a leadership meeting either at Coal Mine Chapter, which would make sense because it's within their service area. And this current lagoon serve the communities, that's an issue. And a question that needs solution. All of us, not just one. We have to come together, Shenanah. Set up a leadership meeting either at Coal Mine Chapter, which would make sense because it's within their service area. We, we more than likely will come up with a solution and say, this is what we need to do. This is how we need to fix this. This is how we can do this for our Navajo people. So Mr. Tahji, if you would um, add this to our next agenda for leadership meeting at Coal Mine Chapter, that would be the place to really talk about this and see the location for ourselves. The proposed location for this wastewater treatment facility. Will accept the report at this time.
Can I say something?
Could I ask who this is? Who is asking to speak? Uh, please identify yourself.
Rena Dotson from Coal Mine Canyon, Chapter President.
Um, since you're from that location, I'll go ahead and give you the respect to say a couple of words for about maybe three minutes. Ashwara, thank you.
Uh, De Rena Dotson in the from Coal Mine Canyon, um, Chapter President. And all the Coal Mine Canyon, um, um, members or voters. Information text. We do need to get together and resolve this issue. Um, leadership meeting over here in um, Coal Mine Canyon Chapter. You can get that information from Mr. Honorable, um, Thomas Walker. This um, project is within Coal Mine Canyon Chapter boundaries. They have documents, so certain things they need from NTUA. Is what we need. Although NTUA do needs to follow through chapter protocol for approval. So there's a couple of potholes in this um, project. So get my email and my cellphone number from Mr. Walker.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dotson. And it sounds like your request there from NTUA is to honestly disclose some documents for the chapter to review as well. So Mr. Coontz, my recommendation to NTUA is make sure everything is being transparent. Everything. Work with the local chapter officials at Coal Mine as well as the grazing official. And the Honorable Vice Chair, Thomas Walker. Make sure that everybody has these information. Perhaps you all need to have a meeting first before we come out as leadership. That way you can tell us that you guys have moved forward on certain things. And you're all working together and that's what we would like to hear when we arrive. Mr. Coontz?
Yes, sir. That's all we ask for. You know, we, we did send letters requesting, you know, meetings uh, to be put on the agendas and uh, you know, maybe we're just not hitting the right, the right person, but uh, we understand. We hear the chapter president um, will, will provide all the data again.
Thank you, Mr. Coontz, because what I gather today is the support is there. It's just that we just need to come back together and say, okay, let's do it this way. We've tried this, let's do this. So thank you. So we, we will have that leadership meeting at Coal Mine, um, Chapter. She will go ahead and vote and accept the report. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay? Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart? Honorable Stewart votes green according to his text message. Honorable Begay? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair now voting motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Coontz, as well as Mr. Stevens. Move forward on B, update report by the Division of Natural Resources and Department of Agriculture on the feral horses and how Navajo Nation is handling them during the drought situation. Mr. Olin Begay and Mr. Leo Watchman and Dr. Shabala, you have twenty minutes. Mr. Watchman? Mr. Olin Begay? Mr. Tahji, are any of these uh, gentlemen on the call?
Chairman, I do see Olin Begay on the call. I see his phone number popping up. I did ask him to unmute his phone.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Olin Begay, press star six to unmute.
Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, this is Leo Watchman. I'm here with Olin McGay. Uh, we did send a, a um, a report on what was asked to Rodney. Hopefully you got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. You have twenty minutes.
I'll, I'll, I'll hand it over to Olin because he's really on the ground and real specific to his report. Well, stand for questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Begay, you have twenty minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, or good morning, everyone. Members of RDC, Mr. Chair, um, let me go over some numbers with you first. Um, or the past two activities that we did as of today, here today, um, we were out in Copper Mine. We received a request from I believe the President's Office that wanted to, us to take care of some horses that were in a copper mine area. Um, that first windmill, if you, if to be exact. These horses have been there and I believe there were um, photos floating around on social media or whatever. And they've been writing the President's Office saying that the horses needed to be rescued. There was no water. So we went out there back on the thirteenth, um, last week, Monday. And we did rescue sixty-five horses out of there. And, but as of now, more pictures and more reports from the grazing officials from Western Agency have been saying that the lack of water and it's, it's getting pretty bad as far as horses and all. Um, but before that, we were in Whipprowell and Saloni Cottonwood. From Whipprowell, we took out, uh, we rescued, excuse me, we rescued we rescued sixty-five horses out of Whipprowell and then ninety-five horses out of Saloni Cottonwood. So with those numbers being the most recent activity that we've done, um, we are sitting at around twelve hundred and twelve hundred, hold on, my, my, my computer's really slow here. Yeah, twelve hundred and seven horses, that's what. Yeah, 1,207 horses. That's where we are sitting at now. So, the upcoming schedule that I sent to Mr. Rodney consists of the ending month of June and for the month of July. So, in July, I do have schedule as Western Agency is is real critical for us to be out there now since the horses are losing water day by day and none of this has gone that way yet. So, the first part of from the 11th through the 14th, if you could look at the map that I gave, or I'm sorry, the calendar that I gave to Mr. Rodney, Copper Mine again, and then Bydaway Gap, Kibeto and Tonaliya. Those are what we're looking at in July. And then the following week, Western Agency began to be in Bird Springs. And then the end of the month, we should be in Central, Shinley Agency and Touchy, Blue Gap and Nazleeny. And remember, these areas right now that we're kind of looking at now are the areas where the reports have been high on horses and we've seen them and all. So, those are the high number areas. So, that's what we're looking at here. And now, what we have ourselves busy with is we're getting ready and working with. Okay. Our chapter resolutions, I'm sorry, excuse me. Our chapter resolutions, we are at 75%. The majority of chapter resolutions have standing resolutions and then are good suffice and all. And then that remaining 25% is they're reaffirming their resolutions. That's what they're doing now. So, I've been working with grazing officials and getting all that back squared away again. So, but no, like I said, 75% of them are active and good. And then that 25 are just being reaffirmed. Yeah. Do you have any questions for us, for me?
Mr. Begay, are you done with your presentation on this part? Is there another one?
Yeah, on this part, I am done.
Okay. Does anybody from your department wish to add to the presentation?
Oh, Mr. Chair, Leo Watchman here. Basically, I'm not sure, Olin, did you really get into? We do have a crew. We have specialized in on these requests. Majority of requests are turning out to be not roundups, but encatsment requests out in these communities. So, we are working and the numbers indicate a chapter willing and wanting to us to help with their horse issues. The most successful horse of roundups have not been roundups themselves. They've been encatsments. And so, we basically stake out one to three days and work with some community member on these dates. So, they're moving forward as the weather changes. It, I hate to say, and however it's taken, it becomes a little easier because the water sources start to delineate and there's only a few. That's where the gathering is at. So, there's probably not going to be roundups. There'll obviously be encatsments at these water sources. And they have been successful at this point. However, there are some areas in which roundups would be taking place and more likely those will rev up close to August and we have a monsoon. This is just kind of give what we're looking at for the summer. The other indication that Olin had on there is that in addition to those two categories, there's also rightaways that we assist the Resource Enforcement on. And those are call-ins that are done through dispatch. So, we react through a case or a assignment through dispatch. And that's done on a daily basis and also done during the course of the month. So, we schedule those and those are hidden myths. There may be a dispatch call that says there's 30 horses in the rightaway, but when we get out there, they're maybe all back outside the rightaway. That's just a dilemma. With that, we do stand for questions and Olin has six to eight people working. We have equipment and we're daily getting out there, either rightaway, entrapment, or just doing some scouting on some requests. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Watchman and Mr. Begay. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Second?
Second, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Yes. Good afternoon. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. Navajo Nation Department of Ag. I just didn't see you, Mr. Watchman. I didn't see you, Mr. Begay. Thank you for the update. My chase region. I know that, we all know that we're in this drought stage for decades now. I don't know, this year, we're approaching the summer. It's going to be hot in July, August. I don't know across the Navajo Nation. I know the horses, they're looking for water. So, we do the Department of Ag. I think I see. Moving forward, what is our plan? What is the plan for these feral horses? I don't know. Across the nation. Water, water, waters. I'm pretty sure a lot of these windmills, the water table. Left and right. And some areas, there's no forage. I don't know, in certain areas, there's a little bit of forage here and there. But these livestock, they're really struggling for food, for water. I don't know. I know we did the drought tour last year. We didn't finish the drought tour. We didn't go to Alamo. We didn't go to Hachilei, Reima. I don't know. We didn't go into Utah. I don't know, spring center. So, moving forward, we need, really need to have a plan in place. Perhaps what we can do is have a meeting with the grazing officials. We really need to educate our Navajo people, our ranchers, to downsize their herd cattle. But nowadays, it's totally different. Less forage. The other day, I was driving back from Wonder Rock, Farmington. I read that Tissons bus, green Tissons bus in Red Mesa. Lot of feral horses. Even that. With grazing officials, land boards, Department of Ag. I don't know. Educating our Navajo ranchers. We really need to do that. Across the Navajo Nation. I know this is everywhere. Utah, Arizona, New Mexico. My brother. Yesterday, one came to my house with a nice thoroughbred. He was just, he was just bony, I see. I see he's very underweight and no weight on him.
Honorable Daniels? Mr. Tahai?
Chairman, Honorable Daniels got knocked off the call.
Okay. Honorable Daniels' recommendation, well, he was, in his recommendation, he was talking about how perhaps we could finish the RDC drought tour with Hachilei, Alamo and parts of Utah and have a leadership meeting with the grazing officials and listen to their recommendations. And we could certainly schedule that sometime. I really appreciate Mr. Olin Begay. 893 horses were removed from October 2021 to June 2022. That's a lot of horses, 893. That's a lot of horses. So, that means Mr. Begay over at Department of Agriculture certainly doing all he can to capture some of these horses. There's a lot of horses just everywhere. Feral horses or I don't know if people own some of these horses and they're not taking care of their horses or what's going on. But then, we cannot support people's livestock. The government cannot. Gas prices are high. A lot of products are high. Road downsized. That was one of the grazing officials' recommendations for people, livestock owners, permittees. To downsize their livestock. So, our grazing officials are faced with a lot of criticism because people's horses and people don't want to. And they try to address it. They try to enforce it and there's really no enforcement. All we can do is capture some of these horses and remove them from the Navajo Nation just as Department of Ag, Mr. Begay does. So, I would think that we would just really support our program here and doing that because they're doing our job. And people just, they're neglecting their livestock. Somehow, if by a day we want to address it and someone just the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration last year provided us a report. We're in a mega drought. Grazing official. Any other comments or questions? Honorable Freeland, go ahead.
Chairman, thank you. Thank you for the update and just want to make sure that we did get an update and I appreciate Olin and Leo getting on the call as well. I know there was some hesitation in the past related to funding and related to operations. I hope that's not continuing to happen. You know, when you, when we drive and we see these horses along the road and there is a drought, but fortunately now we're getting rain. When it was really dry and arid, you know, there's a real need for water and these horses are suffering. And, you know, it just takes the utilization of a chapter to get a resolution together. You know, if there's, if it's an issue. You know, thank goodness now we're getting rain. And, you know, hopefully there's some water being captured at some of these earth and dams. In our area, what we're going to need to do is work with the BIA and work with the BLM on jurisdictional issues and we need to complete the MOU and MOA out here for eastern side. So, something I'm working on with the Joint Land Board and Department of Ag on. And, you know, it talks about land status, but we need to come to an agreement with BIA on allotments, but also the BLM. The BLM is a big part. There's a windmill, there's a windmill that sits north of Chaco Canyon. And I believe it's right on BLM, like a corner of a BLM parcel. So, it's instances like that. How do we, how do we deal with those types of scenarios? And this draft, this MOU and MOA that we get together, it's referred to as a tri-party agreement, but it's really an MOU and MOA. We need to get, we need to finalize that draft with the land boards, with the Farmington Field Office. And then, once we get that finalized, we then need to turn around and present that to the State Director for BLM in Santa Fe. So, those are the kind of things we have to work through for our side because of land status and jurisdictional status. We're going to need, of course, Ag's help and the BIA's help as well. So, idea, Chairman, just want to make those comments today and say thank you again to the crew. And, you know, sometimes I look out my back door and I see you guys driving west on Route Nine with your, with your white truck in your trailer. And, you know, I don't know if there's a crew out here based out of Crown Point, but I do see you guys out here from time to time. But, Adia, thank you very much, Chairman.
Of course, you know, Honorable Freeland, I need to make a correction. I said eight hundred and ninety-three, but it is one thousand two hundred and seven horses were removed. I see, Mr. Begay. Honorable members, if already see any other comments or questions? Chairman, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and committee members, and, you know, listening audience, meeting participants out of the Department of Agriculture. Mr. Watchman, thank you and your staff for, again, giving a report to the Oversight Committee here. Information is useful, it's important, and it's critical. So, RDC, as policymakers, I think it's fair to ask our central government, our divisions, departments, programs, you know. It's fair to ask them, how can we help as policymakers? We are certainly appropriators, we're known for that. After a council legislates policies or amends, the public becomes aware. I think it's, it's, timing is important to ask the Division of Natural Resources and the Department of Agriculture, Department of Water Resources. During this mega drought, mega drought, we're going through that, we're experiencing that. We've been going through this for a number of years now. Now, it's more common in our vocabulary as we talk about issues, concerns, mega droughts. So, that, that, that's going to be a household, those are going to be household words pretty soon. During the mega drought, examining the policies, the laws that we have in place governing land, natural resources, livestock, water, even plants, forage, even the air quality. What, what is it that Resource Development Committee, the twenty-fourth Council, what is it that we can do? We have our own ideas, we can take initiatives, certainly. Colleagues, that's what we've done last year. We created the drought tour for the Navajo Nation, and we wanted, perhaps, to do another drought two. We can call it droughts. Tour number two, Navajo Nation Drought Tour Two for the twenty-fourth Council's RDC. Policymakers undertake a policy study or listen to testimonies, hearings, public hearings. Drought, you know, during this, these contemporary times, the drought effect of unprecedented level and nature. That's yours too. Chairman, all committee members. Back to you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, towards the end there, you broke up, we didn't hear what you were saying. Okay, so. More worse conditions out there on our, our great Navajo Nation. If our findings are the same or worse, what is it that we can do as policymakers to address the situation at hand? Chairman, all committee members. For, for myself, in the region that I represent, the five chapters, I am conducting my own local water and drought tour. Coal mine chapter, a couple of weeks ago. Cameron, Tlalani Lake, Bird Springs. Locally. Policy. I know. Chair, back to you.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I know. I heard. I heard. Leadership meeting, teleconference. Five agency, they can, grazing, launching, executive officers, Department of Ag. They can provide their recommendation as well, Mr. Watchman and Mr. Olin Begay, as to what policies that we could look at and perhaps amend and make it better, or it is a tool that everybody could utilize and work with. So, we, we can definitely plan that. And, Mr. Ty, if we, if you would keep that in mind, we could put that on the next agenda when we do have RDC for approval. Yeah, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, Leo Watchman here.
Go ahead, Mr. Watchman.
I guess the second part of that is the plan. As you may be aware of, the nation passed a drought contingency, and the drought contingency plan basically instructs programs within natural resources to, to do. As I mentioned to you personally, and also mentioned to a couple of other members, that we do have a mitigation plan that we're pushing for that has a dollar amount. And I, I did speak with you yourself and some of the other members that we're needing some help. I think at that time, we can answer the questions on putting dollars to what we're thinking. And an example would be, under the drought mitigation, the Ag Department is supposed to conduct livestock sales throughout the Navajo Nation in lieu of one of the assignments under that particular legislation was passed maybe twenty years ago. Unfortunately, in the years past, when we dealt with drought, we never had any money. But this time around, we're going to be coming back to the council here, and hopefully we can get emergency legislation. We do have all of the information that will be provided to do legislation and justify an emergency. Within that, we have livestock sales, we have working with our grazing officials on, you know, pay to be out there, you know, basically for compliance work. Also, instructions with the producers. Right now, Olin didn't mention that we piled probably, you know, upwards of three hundred head of cattle in the past, you know, thirty days, and some people are selling completely out, or they're really reducing their livestock. At the end, what we're looking at is, and going back to legislation we had to pass was incentivizing that, you know. I know that it, it takes a lot to reduce, or in, you know, because of a lot of things with Navajo way. But at the end, they bought into saving the forage and also the use of water. Mr. Chair, I guess what I'm getting to, we'll be coming with some legislation. We do have sponsor, sponsor interest, yourself included, and we're hoping to move that forward here. We're just needing some, you know, ins and outs with DOJ and also for the finance. We'll finalize that within the next day or so. But the emphasis is downsizing. I know people don't like to say reduction, but downsizing is a, is a key word. Olin uses the word rescue. So, he's been basically Operation Rescue for the last fifteen to twenty days in, in these communities that have horses at these various water holes. This will give you a prelude to what we're looking at with our legislation, is the incentive package for all livestock producers, as well as looking into some changes. And some of the law changes that maybe happened is, it was brought to before, is that our grazing committees have passed resolutions and basically mandating to reduce to their stocking rate, the producers. We're hoping that the RDC might reaffirm that, and moving forward is one angle. The other angle, Ag is working through, through the instruction of this tour, is, you know, needing resources out there to maybe assist these producers that are willing to want to reduce, as well as put in some kind of incentive to where, at, at, maybe at some point, that when they relieve the land, that they can restock, you know, a few years down the road. So, that's just sort of a prelude. I know that we can probably discuss further, but the legislation is not before you, and I think at that time, there'll probably be more meaningful questions on what the thinkings are in terms of plan, also what the resources we're saying we want to dedicate, and also the partners within that. As, doctor, or, excuse me, as Mr. Freeland mentioned, there's other entities that want to help Navajo, and also have Navajo's due produce livestock within their jurisdiction. So, just wanted to mention that, Mr. Chair, thank you for the time.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Watchman. I'll be waiting on those documents so I could have a legislation drafted and have that discussion at that time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Begay, also for the work that you do. I know it must be very difficult, especially in the hot weather sometimes, and I'm sure you're used to it by now. So, I see. We'll go ahead, go, go ahead and put this to vote.
Chairman Kelly. Chairman Kelly. Yeah, on this feral horse, our situation, Chairman, the one thing that we really need to keep in mind is that RDC captured a run-up of that. A lot of them are just being released back, but maybe some are good justification, but sometimes you have all these resources but yet it's just a simple approval from higher to allow certain of these animals to be released. But this ties in with the effort, and you heard this several times, Chairman, that how is it that these lands I mean, could that be done? So, Dikat, Osasuna, and other area, even Big Boe. Non-Navajo is a part that they benefit more in utilizing those lands. Because these are the type of programs, I think, we need to bring in even the Lake Colleges and TCU to see how they can able to help. Because a lot of, I know there's a lot of two-year college or technical schools off the reservation that deals directly with equine.
Of course. They can afford that, and they're feeding and taking care of their livestock, and that definitely could turn into a clinic as to how people can take care of their livestock. The Department of Ag, what, what their recommendations are, then we can sit down and listen as well. So, Mr. Watchman, any response?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I think Delegate Begay hit the nail on the head there. Those recommendations are, are going to be taken into consideration with some legislation, money needed for partnership. Also, the outreach. Incidentally, on the fairgrounds within Winderock, we're having an Ag Expo, and within there, there's going to be some workshops working with the various universities, like U of A, with the extension program on, on animal health, as well as, you know, selecting genetics, those kind of things that will help building quality over quantity is the theme there. So, I think we're, we're online. I apologize for the delay in terms of proposals, but we are, we are going to be moving forward. And if we do get the designation of emergency legislation, I think we'll be right in the middle of providing assistance to producers, as well as our, our officials on trying to meet this drought that we're going to be, you know, experiencing if, if not already. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Watchman, honorable members of RDC. Let's go ahead and.